I realized that taking into consideration the gender balance or the gender aspects is important in all the evaluation processes of such a program. So any research or development program, at least at the level of European Commission, has included such criteria in the evaluation. So since then, I was aware of that and automatically then I have been trying to, in my research proposals, in the workshop that I organize, try to find a way to balance the participation of men and women. Obviously, as you know, we will have different perspectives and it will definitely help either in developing the project or to having different points of view or having out-of-the-box ideas. Last month, I have organized an award ceremony in Oman. We launched the first award for water young researchers in Oman. We got three finalists, one winner, and they were all females. And the Dutch ambassador, who was also a lady, came to me and told me, "What happened? Did you, maybe you didn't allow male candidates to apply?" And in fact, I mean, we got 77% of application from female candidates. And this is not a surprise. I mean, in Oman, the share of women graduating as engineers is 53%. Even, I think, in all the Arab states, this rate has increased in the last years. In Emirates and Palestine, Algeria, we have like 31% share of women graduate in engineering. We have, I mean, the last UNESCO Science Report that I've got the pleasure to participate in, the Arab chapter, we have some figures. Like, for example, in Egypt, we have 43% of researchers females, and in Morocco, 30%. So there have been a lot of advance in that aspect in the Arab world. More Arab women than men are graduating in science, but not at all, all are finding their way into postgraduate research or into the workplace. So we found them, I mean, in the university. After that, I mean, the rate decreases. On the other hand, I mean, women are not also represented equally in the climate change, for instance, related sectors of science as skilled workers, professionals, or decision-makers. Although they are fairly well represented in some related science disciplines, like, as you know, medical sciences, agriculture, or environmental management aspects, they are very much a minority in other fields that will be vital for the transition of sustainable developments, like energy, engineering, transportation, information technology, computing, et cetera. Just recently, I think one month ago, I read a study that finds women peer-review fewer papers than men, as I think was mentioned also by panelists this, the first session, but are more likely to reject the papers, the review. So I think that somehow shows the importance of having this balance, because for sure it's improved the process itself of reviewing papers. So I do agree with the panelists this morning that in the peer-review process, we should consider the gender aspect, because it's enriched the whole process. We have, in the Arab world, wonderful women, innovators, and entrepreneurs in all fields, including science. I've been, I created the Global Shapers Hub in Nice, in France, three, four years ago. And I've realized that, I mean, almost 80% of the members were females, were young females, between 20 and 30 years old, who have ideas, projects to develop in social, economic, and environmental aspects to improve the community. The Global Shapers community is a worldwide community, and they have hubs here in Jordan, in the whole Arab region. And I think that now the problem is not the presence of women as in terms of percentage, but more about their impact, their impact later in the society in terms of taking the key positions in decision-making, taking key positions in the private sector, in civil society, and then again in science and the research. So I think we need to motivate women scientists to participate in the workforce, include and produce some policies such as, I think it was mentioned also this morning, parental leave and flexible working hours for female graduates. We need to encourage qualified Arab women to pursue careers in science and to highlight success stories. I think this is important. We have many success stories. I think you can see here in this room, many science leaders among women in the Arab world. We said in the last UNESCO Science Report that we produced two years ago, that we need in the Arab world champions of science and technology, including in the political arena, to bring about the positive change to which the region aspires. So those champions must be women and men together, and not without another, if we really seek for a real change. So this, I think, a very important aspect. And in terms of my work in the Arab world, especially of young scientists, we try to do a lot of work on that, in terms of highlighting such science leaders among women in the Arab world, because this is very important to motivate the young scientists around the Arab world. And in fact, many, many of our members among young females get scholarships, opportunities, post-doc, and positions thanks to the support that we give in terms of a sort of information that we share with them daily, on a daily basis. And it's something that, I think this is a modest effort, but we try to contribute to this involvement, more and more female, young scientists in science and research, and also in decision-making, in civil society, et cetera. So I think those are the main points I wanted to share here with you. One point I wanted to mention also, yes, also in my organization, in the Middle East Destination Research Center, we have a research scholarship program. We give scholarships for master and PhD students in Jordan, Palestine. And we try to take into account, I mean, to have a balance between female and male candidates. It's not about the quota, as mentioned earlier, but it's about, I mean, they deserve to get such scholarships to develop their master and PhD, and later on, contributing to the progress of science and the research and the economic developments in their countries. So I think this is my two cents put here. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Jawad. But I have just a small comment about what you just mentioned. From your sector as a water determination and research, and I think being in this position will give you like a overview, when women get in this research and in application for this kind of research, this is an advantage or disadvantage? Because women are dealing with water in all the householding, and she can encourage and be engaged with the society more and more. So from my point of view, not just in Oman, even in Jordan, we would like to have her in the sector that is really related to the community and to the, you know, the social that, the work that she do besides doing research. So I agree with you that the increase of them should be there. And I think in women's sector, in water sector, we have enough number. Before I introduce my second speaker, Dr. Lina, I would like to point out that she's a program manager at the United Nations Women Arab State Region, and she also leads the Men and Women for Gender Equality Program. Professor Lina, we would like you to point out in your, I'm not giving you any direction, but what we would like to learn from the previous experience, while women in the research, their limited number, the problem in the research, and now we're hitting to the innovation state or the innovation character, we would like to learn from that lessons for the advantage and disadvantage, and we just not restrict with the number. The number is nothing in helping us. We would like to know the roadmap, how to go on with this next stage, please. Okay.
Yeah, I think I'll just speak. I think that's, no need for the present. Yeah, but it's not necessary to show it. I think it's faster if I just speak.
Put number two. No, no, no.
It's not necessary, actually.
And just let people read some slides, if you like.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll do that. Just that, yeah. So thank you very much for inviting me to this very important event, all of you. And so I'm the program manager for a program by UN Women's Regional Office for the Arab States. I'm based in Cairo. As you probably know, UN Women is the organization with a specific focus and mandate on women's empowerment and gender equality. I would though say that in the past, we've been mostly focused on women's empowerment. We've done less really having a strong gender focus, also engaging men and boys as partners. So therefore, we asked ourselves a number of questions. What are men in the Arab regions, in the MENA regions, attitudes towards gender equality? How do men react towards women's slow but steady improvement in the status in the region? And what are issues of masculinity, issues of being a man? How is it affected by the change in political and economic circumstances in the region? What does it really mean to be a man in the Arab region? So to really to answer those questions, to be able to engage men more effectively as partners in gender equality, we conducted a research called the International Men and Gender Equality Survey, that's been carried out in many countries in the world. But we wanted to contextualize it for the MENA region, so we did a lot of consultations with key actors in the region. And the research was carried out between April 2016 to March 2017, and it has recently been launched. But it was really the local university and research partners in Egypt, Lebanon, Palestine, and Morocco who carried out the research. And so there were a number of questions we asked to find out the attitudes towards gender equality among men and women. And what we found that, though, I mean, there were quite a number of traditional attitudes, as least a quarter of men in the region was pro-gender equality and showed very supportive attitude towards women's participation, towards law, towards gender equality, et cetera. But also what we showed, that men were very much under pressure to fulfill their roles as protectors and providers. And what we also saw, that many men and women said that gender equality is not part of our culture and tradition. But on the positive side, actually, many men and women said that giving women more rights and promoting gender equality can be a win-win solution. It doesn't mean that men lose out, it means that both men and women can gain in a gender equal society. We also asked a number of questions to find out more. And I will not go into all the findings, but looking at women's economic participation, what we can see, that many men and women, especially men, were very traditional when it comes that women should have the same right to work outside the home as a husband. Quite a few men agreed here. And also, men and women were quite conservative and felt that when work opportunities are scared, men should have the, have more access to job than women. So what we could see in the whole home environment, it was quite conservative, also when it comes to decision-making in the home, who makes decision around marriage, around which clothes to wear, when to go out, et cetera, from the house. So in the household, it was quite conservative. But on the positive side, once women were outworking, the attitudes were much more positive. So men and women, and men, a big majority of men felt that men should, when men and women have equal qualifications, they should have the same opportunity to have a job, and they should have the same salary. And they were also very positive towards women with qualified, with the right qualifications to be in a higher political situation, to have a job in the, as a political leaders. And many men were also willing to have a female as a boss. So then we tried to find out who are the men, what are the factors that make men sort of more gender equal? And not surprisingly, it was more educated, more urban, more wealthier men, but also men had been involved as fathers. So that's a key factor, that men that were more involved as fathers in the home, the sharing, the household care work, were also more pro-gender equality in the, in most cases, and also having educated mothers. What was a bit scary in the region was that the younger men was actually less, has less gender equal attitudes than the older men. And this is different from other parts in the world, where we can see that the younger generation of men are more pro-gender equality. So that also means that we need to really target and work with young men for gender equality. The opposite was for women. Young women are very pro-gender equality, much so than the older generation, which also gives lots of hope for the future. We looked at many, many factors. I'm not going into that, but of course, the division of role was quite traditional. But men were also, some of the younger men were really taking on more of childcare, care work. We also looked at violence in childhood, we looked at decision-making and violence. Violence, of course, there were a high number of violence in the home. And this is an area that we really also need to address. So we really need to work more on gender equality in the home environment, to be able to promote gender equality also in the public sphere. And many women were saying that violence in the home, male control and equal sharing of the household work was a big hindering factor for them to work and to make a career. What we also could see, that the mental health among men and women in the region was also something due to the high economic pressure that is there, the conflict in the region, that is something that also really needs to be addressed. And then some of the conclusions that we draw, because we really also don't want this to be a research put on the shelf, but we really want to use it, that breadwinning is central to how men and women identify manhood. But now with the changing circumstances in the region, where women are taking more on the, as economic provider, was also a crisis of what does it mean to be a man if I no longer can fulfill this role? And that's something we need to debate and discuss, issues of masculinity with both men and women, to also try to redefine masculinity and femininity. What we could also see, that family laws and childhood really matters, that young boys who experienced violence, either corporal punishment, or witnesses the mother being beaten by the father, were most likely to become violent when he grew up. But we can also see that men who, as a child, witnessed a more gender equal family relation, also took part in, and was taught in the home to cook and to do traditional roles, were much more gender equal and much less violent, and much more supportive towards women's economical participation. So this, the childhood is a key area that we need. It was also mentioned with the education sector is key, to address gender stereotypes. And as I said, the younger man is something that we really need to work with. And talking about innovation, we really need to find attractive way of engaging young men in gender equality, and consultant involve them to see how would they would like to be involved, and find those way, having discussions in the communities, in the society, and really working from a holistic approach. Another thing that came out was fatherhood, that was, became a very important role. Many men said they wanted to spend more time as father, they would like, they wanted, they participated in prenatal visits, they wanted to do more here, and they also wanted to have paternal leaves. I think when we talk about leave, we should not only talk about, we should talk about leave for both mothers and fathers. And I think that will also change society, it will also make the domestic work more valuable, if both men and women can take maternal and paternal leave and share the household, the household work. And, yeah, so everybody also felt that we need to shape masculinity and femininity, and we really need, things are changing, things are happening. And a lot of change is positive, not all change, but we need to build a positive, we need to create this win-win, win solution in gender equality for both men and women. And as we said, there's a lot of research showing that gender equality is not only good for women, it's also good for society, for economic development, it's also good for children. Child development outcomes improve tremendously in more gender equal family relations and society, but it's also good for men themselves. We can also see that when men have less the burden of being the sole provider or protector, when men relates more with their children, it's also positive for the mental health and for men themselves. Thank you.
With this, a great speaker, and they've taken a long time, they leave no time for me to give some notes. But again, I'd like to concentrate that we've been listening for a lot of numbers, can you put the presentation through? A lot of numbers, a lot of advantage, disadvantage. If we just go back to the title of our panel, which is the role of culture, the role of the innovation in the coming time. We know that our role as a woman in the research was limited. In education is a great, and this is despite where we're coming from. We can see the number from the world, from Jordan, from Arab country, a little similar between now and then. But as a student, we are in a great ratio. As a researcher, it's become less and less. I'm afraid when we go to the innovation stage or time, we will repeat the same mistake, that the number will not help us. And I'd like everybody insist, we don't talk about the number also, only, we talk about the quality. We need the female to take a part, a lead part, a great part as a leader for innovation. Now we are starting with the cultural innovation, and all of us are learning that very fast, hopefully. So we'd like their part and our part to be, from the beginning, fair enough. We don't like, I'm afraid, after five years, we have the same summit like this, and we talk about number, number of female innovator are limited, are limited. Now, let's concentrate on that and see any idea, any lessons that we can improve. And this is, put all the whole of my discussion in the third speaker, Professor Hala. It's hard to introduce her. She's my friend, my advisor, my teacher in the world. Dr. Hala, she's a vice president for University of Jordan for a certain time for research and accreditation, and she was a dean for the science, she was my dean for four years. She will talk about innovation and women in the same time. Dr. Hala, please.
Bismillah arhamma arrahim. I'm going to give an idea about women in higher education. Excuse my voice, because I have to highlight this, I hope it works. We will start with an idea first about women in academia and higher education, and what is the situation of these women in the high management positions? Actually, when we look at the Jordanian women, as some of our colleagues in the morning have mentioned, that we have almost half of women, population are women. Okay, that's good, and we've been talking about this for a long time now. But what does this reflect in terms of labor force? If we look at the labor force, we find a good percentage. Unless we extract the women who are working in the field of education and health, then we find that the numbers drop very much. They reach around 25% of the labor work. Women account for almost 19% only in the higher management positions. So although the numbers are relatively not bad if you look at them, but we see that they have not reached the higher level in the management positions. The Jordanian construction ensures the equality, yet, and it says Jordanians shall be equal before the law, there shall be no discrimination between them as regards to their rights and duties on grounds of race, language, or religion. Yet, let's have a look now at the higher education. What is the reality of higher education governance today? What would the higher education sector benefit from more female leaders, or the presence actually is very much limited, as we will see? Is that important? So what is the participation now? Let's have a look at numbers. Women in higher education in the leadership positions in general are very limited, they remain insignificant. Numbers of academic women continue to increase. We look at them in the posts, at lower posts, as faculty members, we have relatively large number, yet this does not reflect on their posts as presidents or even vice presidents, and it is still limited and restricted to men. Only one, her minister, her excellency, mentioned that we have only one woman as a president out of 31 universities. What about vice presidents? At least three or four vice presidents per university. And we have less than 5% women occupying this position. If we look at the board of, the boards governing the education, higher education, we have the Council of Higher Education, there's only one lady, one woman in the whole body. And at the Board of Trustees for each university, we have, in some cases, we don't have any woman, but lately, this, the, two years ago or so, they tried to make sure that there is one woman among this board. It's very important to have the women together with men. So here I summarize, university presidents, less than 10%, vice presidents, less than 7%, deans, which comes to the lower position, we have about 15%. And the department heads, it varies from one university to another university, but we have around 10 to 22%. Women in such strategic positions can, of course, facilitate institutional change, improve recruitment, retention, and advancement of women within the professional ranks. Who is eligible to become a dean, a vice president, or even a president? A faculty member who holds the professorship. Okay, let's have a look at the faculty members and what is the range. As full-timers, we have around 25% females. At the bottom level of the faculty ranks, we have lecturers and instructors and women for almost 50%. Assistant professors, 30%, associate professors, 11.7%, and full professors, you see, as we go up in the level of faculty members, we find that the numbers become limited. And we, you touched upon this indirectly this morning. You mentioned about the promotion, who gets promoted to a higher rank means that this person has to do a lot of research, publish in peer-reviewed journals, and compete with others. This needs time, this needs laboratories, and not all male faculties are ready to share their equipment with the female faculties around them in the same department. The woman has to spend a long time, especially if we're talking about science, and we took, the three of us come from scientific faculties, which means, I used to do this, when I started my work at the university, I used to bring my children to the lab with me, draw, scratch, do their homeworks, anything, just to be around so that I keep an eye on them. And at that time, nobody would try in the department to minimize our efforts, yet we had to do a full-time teaching. So we have the teaching, we have the research to do, and we have our families to take care of. So we have the teaching, we have the research to do, and we have our families to take care of. This is why you see that there is quite reduction when we go from one level to another level. But what about the students? Do we have the same problem with the students? No, again, I'm repeating what has been mentioned. The number of students at the bottom level, at the BSc level, we have almost 51% women. Even in the scientific faculties, my school of science, her school of pharmacy, and other schools, medical schools, dentistry, most of the students are females. Yet, when we look at the graduates, do they get jobs? Do they find places to work with? In the higher diplomas, 68% of females get higher diplomas. And mainly in the, in certain schools, but not in most of them. Masters degrees, only 45%, and the PhD, 40%. The graduates, those who earned their degrees, 51% of the total, 49 masters, 39.1% PhD degrees. So those who get their PhD degrees are expected to enroll in teaching, mostly in the university. So we expect then very soon that the number of faculty members will increase in terms of PhD holders. Are there barriers? Of course, this is the problem. The work pressure, long working hours, lack of professional training, distance between the workplace and home. And we are all facing this problem in Amman, if we're talking about Amman. This will take the trip from home to back to home, it takes a long time. Family obligations, socio-cultural and economical barriers, lack of empowerment, and we want to concentrate on this, stress on empowerment, lack of access to career advice and mentoring. Again, we need to concentrate on this. Empowerment, adequate training opportunities. Again, we don't give opportunities for training for women, we don't give them special training. And if there are any of these types of training, then they don't have enough time to go to these sessions because they have other obligations. Networking is very important, especially those who have reached higher levels of management, then they can transfer their knowledge to the newcomers. Counseling and advice, they may need to enhance their performance function more effectively in the careers. If I want to, any help? Just jump to the other presentation. I'm sorry, but you asked me to combine both together. Innovation. But I just want to mention something fast, fast, I'll go fast. Yes. Time, innovation. Okay, so under all this pressure, how can we think of innovation? Innovation, we want to make changes, and we want to transfer this idea to our students. So generally, an innovative culture begins with accepting that the world really has changed and being open to more changes to come, constantly looking for ways of being better. Collaboration is very important. Among groups within the same university or different universities within the country or outside the country, creative thinking and collaboration are encouraged, should be encouraged and rewarded. What is the role of institutions in higher education? Do our university institutions prepare themselves or prepare the students for innovative thinking? The academy lacks a serious culture of innovation. I'm sorry to say that, but professors have few incentives to spend time with undergraduates, improve their teaching, or measure what their students are learning. Lecture classes are large, degrees have become deliverables because we are no longer willing to make students work hard against high standards to earn them. They just want to get the degree and a passing grade. Needs to be led by the academy itself. Supported, has to be supported by boards of trustees, should be taken seriously, this is very important, and the higher educational professional organizations. The students should become better equipped to solve complex multidisciplinary problems, motivated to become leaders in their chosen field, and able to bring fresh perspective to global challenges. Our graduates should be equipped, better equipped to solve complex multidisciplinary problems, able to bring fresh perspective to global challenges, and motivated to become leaders in their chosen field. Think critically and creatively, speak and write cogently, clearly, solve problems, comprehend complex issues, and accept responsibilities and accountability. And thank you.
Thank you, Professor Hala. I think you said it all, I cannot add anything. The most important I can get from this presentation, your presentation, we have to set an example for our students, for our friends, for our colleague. And this was one of the point that I was going to start with, that what our role in this session and this summit? What we will get out of this panel for our students? Being in a female, it's a start, it's a beginning of story, being as a girl, then go like a sister, then like a mother, then like a friend, I guess, and then as a professor. So our role is not standing just how to be a researcher, how to interact with all your role in life and society and make an advantage, to encourage people, or just to lead them how to go on with their research and innovation life. And I say it's not just a culture of innovation, it's a life of innovation. If we want to really be there and have a role, really an important role in our life in the future. Our second next speaker, Professor Dr. Marta. She would like to be introduced as a full professor, and she insists that she's a professor before any management things. Her CV is very, very long. So she's a full professor in diversity, technology, and product development. And this is very, very nice title for me, and I hope we will learn from you what's this title mean and what you did in that one. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Kind introduction. Welcome, welcome. Also from my side, I'm professor at the Technical University on the one hand, and I'm also working with Fraunhofer at the other hand. I'm there, I'm head of an institute called Center for Responsible Research and Innovation. I would like to start with a very brief introduction into Fraunhofer, which is a sister organization to Max Planck. Max Planck in Germany is funded by the government, is doing pure research, and Fraunhofer is similar in size, but is doing applied research. So most people, most researchers working with Fraunhofer for five to seven years go further on to industry or start their own companies. So this is the setting where I'm coming from. And you see here, we have around eighty research institutes worldwide in an annual budget of 2.1 billion euros. One-third of this amount, which is really only for research, is coming from industry via contract research. One-third is given by the government, and one-third is grants from the commission, from the ministries, whatever. So it's really applied research we are doing. And among our stuff, there are 24,000 people working with Fraunhofer in whole Germany, but only around 15% women researchers. So we really have a problem to have engineers among the German scientists. What I want to say here is that our understanding of innovation is always close to the market, so bringing technology to the market. And my understanding, and this is something I really want to address here again, is that social innovations are always interlinked, combined with technology and technological innovations. Either new behavior, a new working condition, whatever, is the starting point for new technology, or a new technology may be the starting point for a new social behavior or societal behavior. And what we, oops, now I have a problem. I should go here also. Okay, sorry. So what? Okay. Now, now, the solution for us within Fraunhofer is the idea, when we want to address users' needs and also needs and desires from women, we should find another way to address this needs, to learn about that needs, to bring these perspectives into our research because we don't have the women among the researchers. This would form this valley of death. On the one hand, we have not enough women. On the other hand, we want to address this needs of different stakeholders. And therefore, we started a process, and this was a research project, sorry, for that. I don't know what I'm wrong with that. Only the last one, okay, not the medium.
This one, if you want to return back to this one.
Okay, no, the last one, I have to learn the last one. Yeah, yes. Okay, so we started a research project, and where we really tried to address a new market idea between two sectors. For example, between agriculture and pharmacy to have a more preventive culture. And then we start to create ideas with laypersons. That's possible. And what we learned during this research project is that this layperson input is really a new way to think about and a really interesting input for science. And then we start, with this input, we start our research projects. And we developed kind of technological prototypes within Fraunhofer. This is something we are specialized in. And then we also create business models. And this is a starting point for new startups around this technologies. And I would like to describe here very, very condensed this three ideas. It's a kind of co-creation, generating ideas with different stakeholders. Then you have a phase of conditioning with specialists who are able to identify who can address this ideas, this needs, this desire, with what kind of methods. And then you have a first prototype where you can show the results, interest industry, or also create startup money. And I would give you an idea, what happened with this five, three-year project, Discover Market, it was called. We have at the moment four startups running. One just got a big funding from a big company in Germany. This is in the field of IT. We also have in the field of materials and also in the field of health. So quite a lot of projects, it's just to show that it's possible to use stakeholder input to start with new ideas into science and also in a lot of other research projects. What are the lessons we've learned during that? We still need more new methods for such kinds of interactions. This was a starting point, we need more about that. And this is a chance really to develop new markets and to address needs and wishes of people. And I think this is really something new and brand-new result. We are always doing also research with our own research projects. What we found that is that women as entrepreneurs really try to use their research results, while men as entrepreneurs like to have a big market chance. And this is something which is really helpful to have in mind when you want to start new business here. And I think this is a clear vote for more women also among the entrepreneurs. And yeah, there, I want to stop.
Thank you very much. I think we learned a lot from this slide. And we have a lot to discuss during the coffee break or even now because you took us exactly to another island of the thinking. Thank you for that, Professor. Our second speaker, no presentation. Dr. Nancy, you'd like to take it from here or you'd like to stand here? Again, my friend, Dr. Nancy, we are together in the PS, in the University of Jordan. She is in the pharmaceutical faculty, I'm in science. Again, she'd like to be introduced like a professor, and this is like a set for a trend in our panel, that all of us are professor and we'd like to be introduced as a professor, as a model, as a leader. She's also a leader because she was a vice president for six years in a private university in Jordan. Please, Dr. Nancy, share with us your thought. Dr. Nancy, kindly, we'll restrict with the question that we raise in the panel, so she will take us now for the panel exactly. Thank you, Dr. Nancy.
Salaam alaikum, bismillah arhamma rahim. Your Royal Highness, thank you very much for inviting me to talk to this many-gender summit. And I should say that I'm quite humbled with the caliber of the speakers this morning and also now, and I feel that we have a lot to learn from each other. I would like to start saying that I'm a professor in pharmacy, and I was a vice president for six years at one of the private universities in Jordan. One of the things that I've learned while I'm doing my PhD in the UK, and during the, as you said, we were together in the BSc, so basically in 20 years of doing my PhD. 10 years, okay, 10 years. We can't change the time. 20 years being a teacher, a lecturer, and administrator. I can say that whenever we talk to people and deal with people, people have very closed mindsets. And sometimes, some people deal with each other based on the stereotypes. And their stereotypes basically comes from their ethnic backgrounds, from their religious backgrounds. And when I lived in the UK, even in the UK, they have English, Scottish, different backgrounds. But what I've learned, although we are quite different, but at the end of the day, we are very similar because we share humanity. And this is one of the things that echoes what, if anybody attended the opening session, Prince Hassan was saying, that humanity is basically what drives us to get things better. And I think this is, this is the point I want to start. And I want to take the discussion a bit in a different path, if you allow me to do that. One of the, this session is basically talking about the role of women and men in advancing the culture of change and innovation. One of the buzzwords these days is innovation. Everybody's talking about having innovation in their firms, in their teaching, in their schools, etc. And another word that is used a lot these days is open. How to be open? We have open research, we have open access journals. Basically, everything should be open for anybody to access to. And one of the things that is important, that is coming into the culture of innovation, something called open innovation. And open innovation basically says that everybody can be creative, everybody can be innovative, which means whatever our backgrounds, males, females, ethnic backgrounds, we can be creative if we are given the chance, the opportunity, and also we are giving the, we will put our heads together to understand a problem and get an innovation from that problem. And this is one of the things that I'm sure of. If we put our heads together, whatever our backgrounds, we can get more creative ideas, more innovative ideas. And they say that scarcity breeds innovation, but also different backgrounds and diversities will breed innovation at the same time. will breed innovation at the same time. So basically, when we talk about innovation, innovation is something, it's the culture of innovation, it should be something that is taught, and at the same time, it is, it is something that should be, everybody should be engaged with that innovation. So it is an additive process. We have to put all the, our individual skills together, our diversities, and we can get something, we can have something in front. And this is the whole idea of the gender summit, that we have, that we were talking about the differences, but I, the, what I want to, the message that I want to convey, that we are not very different. Even males, females, they are not different. We are talking about having collaborative work rather than having individualized work. Everybody have their own needs. Whenever we talk about innovation, we have to include all these diversities in the process of getting the innovation. At the same time, whenever we have innovation, the innovation itself should meet all the needs and the requirements of the individuals. We're talking about males, we're talking about females, and at the end of the day, we're talking about different culture, different special needs in the society. So to have, I think my message is to have an open mind and to include all individuals before we do the actual innovation and teaching the innovation, the culture, and also to, to get the outcomes that meets the needs of everybody. And again, this is what we share. This is basically, we have to look at what we, the basic grounds of all of us, that we are all humans at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Nancy. I'm just looking for her CV. She's the only one that introduced herself as a mother and a founder. For the rest of us, we forget to do that. So she's really the model for that, and I hope she will lead her daughters and sisters and students to what she was saying and advise us to, to be careful about and take about, care about it. Our last speaker, but not the least of course, and we left him for the last, because he's a president, of course, so we have to leave him in the beginning or for the last. Professor Michi Kuni, I tried to pronounce him Japanese, in French, I hope I did it right. Michi, Michi Kuni. He's the president of university, he have a very big CV. He's a specialist in biology and cancer, and I'm wondering how's the cancers and the research he used, that he did, lead us to the gender summit and what he have to tell us about women and this issue, of course. Please, Professor.
Good morning, Your Royal Highness, ladies and some gentlemen. I was a president of Nahuay University until two years ago, and actually, our university was selected as United Nations Ten by Ten by Ten He for She Program. I'm still proud of it. But now, today, I'm going to talk about our recent experience. We JST this year in May had the honor to host the Gender Summit Ten for the first time in Japan. It was a great honor for us to be participated, Her Royal Highness, Princess Sumaya Bing Hassan, in Gender Summit Ten, to deliver the opening remarks. The summit was, I would say, great success, with the support of one hundred fourteen organizations, as well as participation from over six hundred people from twenty-three countries and regions. Today, I would like to talk about the promotion of women's active participation in science and technology, based on our discussion at the time of Gender Summit. Unfortunately, this is our situation. We Japanese and Jordanians has similar problem, as you can see by the ranking. You have no doubt about it, but as a Japanese, I have some excuse about this. It's a cultural excuse. Let me explain. At the time of Gender Summit, Professor Ling from Hong Kong University pointed out, because of the common understanding, when confusion is, is difficult to pronounce, which is prevalent through across East Asia, women have been confined to the home and hindered their social We have similar culture, but Japan has some difference. If you notice about the economic side, you know, the, for example, the percentage of Japanese women who can completely control the household finance, whole finance, not a part, whole finance, is in fact overwhelming, higher than other countries' women. On the contrary, this is our fate. You know, the average allowance to a husband like me, in his forties in Japan, is approximately eleven US dollars per day to survive. Can you believe it? I can tell you, it's a truth, I experienced already. We have to survive. How's your country? Okay. Anyway, in addition, the percentage of women who can make major financial decision, for example, buying a car, at least, higher than fifty-six percent of women has that decision, you know, not men. We have no doubt. We, I have never have a chance to say no to my impress. This is our situation. You don't believe me, but I, I'm strong, because I, I experienced already. So it's a cultures aspect we have somehow. And this is kind of diversity in culture. If you change that viewpoint, we have different view, we can have different view. And, but now Japan is changing, and let me explain somehow how it is changing. If you check the ratio of female employees at the United Nations, it is sixty-three percent for Japan, which is the highest in the world. That means Japanese woman is much more globalized than men, and they are very skillful over the different culture, you know, communication skills very high. We should notice this point. And second example, I want to show several clear evidence. This is a Japanese civil engineer, Dr. Rayko Abe, she's a president of Oriental Consultant in India. She has been making a great success at civil construction site in Asia for many years, more than twenty years. She, she's working everywhere in Asia. Right now, Dr. Abe is a metal construction manager, director, and what, I, I touch here. Oh, okay. Anyway, I can see here, something wrong. But anyway, I want to, what I want to tell you is, she is the smallest person amongst over three hundred machmen, Indian machmen, and she is a director. She can manage everything and make huge network of metal in New Delhi. Okay, thank you. Let me show you another case. Next example is an information researcher, Dr. Cheko Asakawa, I respect her a lot. She's an IBM fellow at IBM Japan. Although she's a blind person, completely blind, she developed wide array of innovation based on her physical characteristics. She's indeed a true innovator. In, in her case, I would say, difficulty, weakness, that makes her genuine. This is another point I would like to discuss, the cultural aspect of the gender issues. And next, fourth case is an example of female high school students, Ms. Yu Onodera, and as a student of Fukushima High School in Japan. Why I draw this, your attention to this, is they suffered from the accident at the Fukushima nuclear plant in two thousand and eleven, at the time of devastating earthquake. They worried, they cannot stay at home and they cannot enjoy their high school life because of the accident, but they want to stay at home. Then, what they took was they conducted the careful survey research of the exposure level of radiation in Fukushima area by themselves. And compared with their note of daily life, they checked every day, for a year. They collaborate with the teachers, engineers of dosimeter manufacturer, as well as the high school student abroad to share the scientific evidence. And of course, of course, we JST supported them. And here, you can see, they obtained the data that there was no significant difference in the level of radiation exposure between Fukushima and other Japanese area, as, as well as those in Europe. That means they can stay in their hometown and enjoy their life. This kind of education is very important. And lastly, let me introduce some interesting idea. This is a comparison of the economic value of patents between those made by male alone, blue color is male alone, and obtained patent with a mixed gender team, red color. We don't have, oh, don't challenge too much. I know your idea. Anyway, what I want to emphasize is, it's clear that mixed gender team obtain patents with an average value twenty percent higher than those obtained by male-only team. You can agree, these data suggest women are truly innovative, okay? And if we want to change our society to be more innovative, ladies, we need your talent. It's clear. Yes? Please look at this figure. The horizontal axis shows generalist and specialist. Vertical axis means home and society. And traditionally, Japanese women stay at home and work as a generalist. But now it's changing, younger generation wants to work in the society directly as a specialist. This is a challenge we have to overcome soon, but I think I'm somehow optimistic about this point, because this society is changing. In near future, traditional jobs occupied male will be replaced by AI and robot. In near future, what we need is, you know, communicative ability, networking, general idea, like, we need, if we want to be innovative, we need convergence and transdisciplinary idea, that generalist has. Now I can feel that sign of change in Japan, and what we need are offering equal opportunity to younger generation, and let's, the young brave ladies go ahead. And we should cover young parents, don't let them alone, we, we should, as a community, we should support nursing. This is another important message I want to tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor, very much. This slide summarize everything, I think. In the traditional social demand, if you allow me to point out, you can see one woman in each, in each community, like a research group, like a paper, patent, in the board of RSEs, in, in the management, we can see just a woman or two women as a single, and they cannot do a lot when they are just single, you know? And there is other committee, the committee, another social thing that leave them alone, and this is, will not help. And I think if we go to the innovation stage, our state, our culture, we should have the other one. And our summit, I hope all the panel or all the speaker with me concentrate in this point, and we give many, I would not say an advice, as a roadmap, how to mingle and how to let women really be in between. All the number and all the studies, all the literature, help us to summarize our panel that we need to be in everywhere, as, not as a quota only, as a qualified people, females and male, of course, and because we think differently, so we will make like mixing in a, in a real innovation culture. Innovation need different approach, different studies, different things, so we have to be ready for this stage or state. My boss, Dr. Anna, said there is no time, so I have to cut the panel, and colleague, okay, okay, she got an award, so I have to listen for her. And I think our speaker will be around if you need any question, and maybe in the end of the session, if we have the time, we will open for all the panel. In the end, let me, please join me to, to, to thank our speaker, great speakers, and looking forward to stay with us. We have another session, another panel, so take a coffee and come back, please.
No, there's no more coffee.
Really, I'll buy coffee.
So now we, I call, we will, we will start our third panel, which is, I think, the most exciting panel, because it's about the scientists and the activists. So scientists as decision-makers and the difference they can make. So I encourage you to remain and call, phone your friends, your colleagues, call everybody to come and attend this session.